It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Dr. Shimon Rogers. Roll call.
Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Johnson? Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lopez Camila.
Yes. All right, we'll start with our pledge allegiance. Ms. Osse, if you would like to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And these are our resolutions.
Hello and good evening, everyone. May I have Graham Carlson come on up? Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School senior student Graham Carlson. Whereas Lockport Township High School Graham Carlson was chosen to participate as a cast member in the all-state production of She Kills Monsters on January eleventh through thirteenth, twenty twenty four, at the Illinois High School Theater Festival at Illinois State University. Whereas Graham Carlson has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District two oh five, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this twenty-second day of January twenty twenty four. Congratulations. Next up, may I have the choir come on up? Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School choir chorus students, all-state chorus Cheyenne Klowitz, Soren Moin, Maura Seigen, honors chorus Graham Carlson, Tara Mustakaracos, Evelyn Mohn, Abigail Sanford. Whereas Lockport Township High School chorus students were selected for the Illinois Music Educators Association All-State Conference and whereas the students will perform as part of the Illinois Music Education Conference on January twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty four, at the Illinois Music Education Conference in Peoria, Illinois. And whereas these students have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District two oh five, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this twenty-second day of January twenty twenty four. Congratulations. And finally, may I have the all-state band come on up? Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School all-state intrumis, Stephen Clausen, Delaney Coleman, Jessica Ee, Keenan Namanson, Christopher Ripley, Jacob Radiger, Kayan Santiago, Kevin Smolinski. Whereas Lockport Township High School band earned the all-state status and whereas the students performed at the Illinois Music Education Conference on January twenty-fourth through twenty-seventh, twenty twenty four, in Peoria, Illinois. And whereas the students have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District two oh five, that this resolution was adopted on this twenty-second day of January twenty, January twenty twenty four. Congratulations. And for our final resolution, I'd like to introduce Dr. John Green.
Would Chelsea Osse just come to the front? This resolution is recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School senior student Chelsea Osse. Whereas Lockport Township High School student Chelsea Osse was selected to join Senator Richard J. Durbin and Senator Tammy Duckworth in representing Illinois during the sixty-second annual United States Senate Youth Program Washington Week on March second through ninth, twenty twenty four. And whereas Chelsea Osse was selected from among the state's top student leaders to be part of the one hundred four National Student Delegation and will receive a ten thousand dollar college scholarship for undergraduate study. And whereas Chelsea Osse has brought honor and distinction to herself, her family, school, and community by achieving this respected honor. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District two oh five, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this twenty-second day of January twenty twenty four. Congratulations.
The Board of Education, congratulations to all of the students. Amazing. And also to the parents. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, I would just probably add like, you know, special thanks, you know, obviously to all the parents that are here today for being your students' first teachers. Also, I know we have, I saw Chad Gatz here, Brian Covey is here, Dr. Laura Gilbert, I saw, you know, and nothing happens without the teachers, you know, here at our high school district. I mean, I think probably all of you can think about ways that you've been inspired, you've been moved, you've been taught, you've been moved to a, to a new place in this accomplishment. So there are a lot of things to go around to parents, to teachers and coaches, you know, inside. But also, you know, congratulations to all of you. Sometimes when these things happen, you know, when you're like Ms. Osse, one of one hundred and four in the nation, or yourselves, you're at that level of all-state, sometimes you fall into thing, well, you know, I did that last year, I'm gonna do it again, without maybe paying attention to all the students who didn't rise to your level. You know, to be selected all-state anything, to be, you know, the all-state play, to perform for the state. It is, it's rare, rare air. And sort of my wish, just on behalf of the board, is that each one of you, you enjoy your accomplishment. Don't pass by it too much. Don't get too egotistical, right? Because none of us can, right? You know, you're only as good as your next accomplishment. But really, you know, be graceful, be thankful, and enjoy the moment when you, when you are in it. And if you could do one thing, it might be awkward for you, but really take, you know, account of who got you here, right? And if it's your parents, obviously, your teachers, obviously, you know, write them a note, send them an email. Write down an actual old-school note. Walk up to them and be specific about what they grew in you and why you're grateful for it. You know, your heart's gonna enlarge, their heart's gonna enlarge, and it's just a good way to seal what you've done that's gotten you to this level. Because none of us get to any place, you know, without the help of those who went before. And then, especially those of you who are seniors, find somebody to mentor and tell them, hey, you're really awesome. You know, you could be a great instrumentalist, great singer, you could be me next year. Tell them that. Don't, don't hold back. Tell another student, hey, we, I think you could be, you could be great. Because sometimes we just don't know we can until somebody helps.
And I just want to ask, if you guys do end up becoming famous, please donate something so we could put it on the display board there, autographing. That way we could be like, hey, you know, they went to our school, just as a request.
All right, do thank you, Mr. Navarro. Do I have a motion to accept the resolutions as presented?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Dr. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Well, just give you a few minutes.
Yeah, we'll do a five-minute transition.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. What happened, right? Michael. Hey, Brian.
It would be crazy if we ever did get like a guy in the audience out there.
Hi, Brian. You're on your side. Hello, we see you. Hey, congratulations. All right, look at, you know, the Osse family, just looking, you know.
Oh.
Yeah. Hey, Anne, do you mind announcing Michael, that he's joining us remotely?
Yes, yes. We also have Michael, Mr. Michael Travis joining in.
He's joining in, Mr. Travis is, is joining in. And he had a business emergency, so he's joining remotely due to business.
Yeah, it was a voice call with the, what, the resolutions? No, to.
Yeah, you've already, you've already taken your roll call, so when a new member comes in, you just have to announce their presence. You don't have to retake roll call.
All right.
Hi. Hi. Okay, just a reminder, I'm McKenna. So twerp, that's February seventeen. Student government doesn't really have a big part in it. We just plan the dress-up days and that's, we're still working on that. So that's all we've got for twerp. The snow days, there are two snow days that we had. They weren't e-learning and personally, I was really glad that they weren't e-learning. Obviously, we didn't have that option, but I was so glad. Because it's not like during COVID where it was e-learning every single day. So like to go into e-learning when you've been in school is just, I don't find it practical. I don't, you know, teachers don't have a plan for that and kids don't know what they're doing when they get on the call and it's just, I thought it was better to not have an e-learning day. But I know some of my peers disagree with that and they wish that they had an e-learning day. They thought it would have been more practical, I don't, yeah. Yep.
I'm Lola, I'm a senior. One thing that students are also concerned with is the ELL learners that we have. There are a lot more of them recently and we feel that like they aren't getting the help that they need lately since there's a lot of them and I don't think we have the like right staff for them. Because I have, I have some in my gym class right now and they're like very isolated from everybody else and it's just, it seems very hard for them. And then for our Special Olympics basketball game, we usually do St. Baldry's, but we were thinking of doing a different charity this year. Just to switch it up and like maybe be more active throughout the year to get like maybe service hours for students. And just to help more people in the community.
Sums it up, guys. Thanks. So I'm Aleah Mucini, I'm a junior. And today I'm talking about, so we have a controversy for next school year's calendar where we can either start as early as we can in August or as late as we can in August to where then the students have either the option to do finals before break or finals after break. And a lot of percentage of the students has been, have been, you know, polled and they've been saying that they wanted to do it before break so that they can, you know, you know, if we have to do like another week of school, we can do finals before break. We can take our break and then we can have a week or two after to, you know, review finals or either, you know, do some light activities or, you know, some projects or some other assignments as we can, you know, do that. Because students don't prefer, I mean, no one would prefer going on break for three weeks and then coming back, not, you know, being in class for three weeks and just finals, you know, that week. So yeah, a lot of students prefer having finals and then, you know, having like a week or two spent on the first semester, you know, revising finals or, you know, just looking over them or doing other types of activities. Any questions?
Where do you two stand on the e-learning versus no e-learning?
Lola, you wanna go first?
I personally like the snow days. Same thing as McKenna, I don't find them effective. Like I personally am like interactive with my teachers, but other students like in my class are definitely not.
Yeah, that's what I feel too. Other students aren't as interactive as they should be. They started like, started drift off from the meeting, you know, cameras off, you know. It's a good substitution for when you need it, like if it's a week, you know, if we have that case, like a week snow break and, you know, everything's shut down, but nothing that severe has happened yet. But it is a good substitution, but just not, you know, anything beneficial to the students on the long term.
Yeah, because that's what I've heard too, is that some people, they just keep it, they keep it on.
Oh, yeah.
And then they just like, they just swallow the teacher. But if you're looking at your game, it looks like you're really engaged, which you're not. So I don't know. How do you, how do our board members feel about this, Lola?
I think they summed it up pretty well. Sometimes when you're online but at home, it can be harder to focus. I know I have four kids in my house and every single one of them are on different computers and our Wi-Fi is lagging and it's harder to engage. So I think that you made a really good point that when it's a longer break, like when our freshmen were out of the building for a week, it's really essential for them to be learning when they're at home. But if it's one or two days, I don't think it's a necessity.
I have a question. Lola, I know you mentioned the ELL learners, you know, being isolated. Have you ever thought of maybe getting a buddy for them, something, you know?
That would be a good.
Or something to have them join, like the group?
Like the AP Spanish classes I know are like pretty, or almost fluent, or some of them like take the seal by literacy. So I think that could potentially help.
I would like to add on to that question. I want to ask how with your teachers that aren't, don't, don't have another language or aren't bilingual, how are the relationships with heritage learners and those teachers that don't have that language? Like are there, is there a language barrier or do certain teachers compromise in English ways?
I've seen, one of my teachers is like somewhat fluent in Spanish. But they're like also learning English, so it's kind of good for them to be speaking English. But also there are like some staff like that are fluent that come in and like, like if they need to be taught a lesson, like math or like something like that.
As well as assignments. I mean, some assignments I know that are, there's assignments available in different languages. So you can get Spanish, you know, Polish, Lithuanian. So that really helps a lot too, if, you know, the student gets to do their own thing. But if they have any questions, that's where the difficulty, difficulty comes in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, yes, good job.
Thank you. All right, A T report.
Good evening. Just wanted to take a minute to congratulate the students that were recognized again tonight. It was a great weekend to be a porter, so we can't forget about our boys wrestling, both JV and varsity cheerleading, girls and boys bowling for their outstanding performances this weekend. But I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't also bring up the idea that they couldn't have done that without their coaches and sponsors giving in their time and dedication to helping out that. So I just wanted to bring that up. Busy time around here to our buildings, grounds, and maintenance for, you know, keeping us safe and salted and shoveled. Mother Nature has challenged us every day since we've been back, so that's been fun, but they, they always know what to do. And our counselors are busy scheduling students for next year, so meeting individually. You know, we're excited to start the hiring processes for known vacancies and preparing students for the upcoming state testing, so it is just busy times around here. So that's all I have to report. Thank you.
I A S B governing board report.
I wasn't able to go to the legislative conference. Yes, I was sick, so. And I saw you my time to that.
And I'll do it in my legislative report, because just when you thought things weren't heating up, today we met with a high school district organization in Illinois. It is an organization that lobbies on behalf of high school districts. I have a couple items to share with you. I'll do it in my legislative report. Some new things, you know, now is the season where bills are, are entering the system, so.
All right, foundation board report.
I mostly just wanted to talk to, I wish the kids would have stayed, but talk about the scholarships that we have available. I think that I would implore our students to encourage others to always apply. I think that there's a misnomer that scholarships are only for the top kids, the smartest kids, the high, you know, you know, all of that. But if in, at Lockport Township High School, any graduating senior, whether it's mid-year or other, qualifies for our scholarships. So not just from the foundation, but from lots of organizations. Mrs. Crosby and I are gonna host compass meetings with students to just sit down and give them kind of, not that we'll sit next to them and help them figure out how to fill out these, they don't need, they don't need our help to do that, but just a space and a time in their day where they can have the time dedicated to filling out scholarships. I think sometimes something just that simple will hopefully make a difference. So, you know, we've got a lot of good things that are happening, but the scholarships are kind of the heart of the foundation. And, you know, we're excited to see we've added more and that's the goal, to continue to build on that, to keep offering more opportunities to students. So I just want to deeply encourage, so anyone that's listening at home, that they should apply, reach out if you have questions. If you don't think that you qualify, I, I would ask. You know, sometimes you read something and maybe you're misunderstanding, but I also try and remind students that we give away a couple hundred thousand dollars at our awards night in May and the, this, the field of students that are up there, it's not a hundred thousand students. So there's, there's lots of opportunities and a lot of these students get two, three, four different scholarships. So it's out there for everybody and I think that our, a lot of kids just think that they don't qualify, but that is, I'm here to say that's not true.
I have one question about the scholarships.
Yeah.
I know that on each scholarship, your FASPA number is required, but since FASPA got pushed back so far, the only reason I haven't been able to apply is because I don't have my number yet.
I think you could just say, you know, still waiting.
Like TBD or something?
Yep. I think it's okay. I, so I always encourage students when they're filling out their scholarships, never leave a, a space blank, just to make sure. But in that case, I think the people do understand.
You can do that?
Yeah, sometimes if it's an at-me for a scholarship that's looking for need, they'll require a couple other things from you that's not the FASPA.
Okay.
And I would say, I only know of two that I represent that have that requirement.
Yeah, I know that, yeah.
So most of them would be fine with or without. It's not usually a dip, like a determining factor on what or not.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep.
No, but I do, I can attest to that. It's, you know, Lockport Women's, we have scholarship, you know, four thousand dollar scholarship and last year we only had like twenty-two applicants. So when we really expected a lot more, but it's just, I don't know. I don't know why they keep trying.
Yes.
We have to keep trying.
Yes, and there's, there's community members that are here that know about scholarships also, like it's, this community I feel like is very generous with their time, their donations. There are a lot of opportunities for, for our kids. And I hope that they take care, take, uh, take that applicant, not applicant, that responsibility on themselves to do it. But again, you know, we'll host these, a few different things to try and encourage them. Again, not to help them write their things, but to give them their time. Sometimes that's all you need. Because like, parents love to say. that's all you need. Because I, parents love to say the kids don't have time. Yeah. We can find fifteen, twenty minutes to make five thousand dollars. Thanks.
No, thank you. Right, um, legislative report.
Uh, I said I have no report this month. I do have a report this month, so I apologize to the public. Uh, like I said earlier, we just met, High School District Organization in Illinois, and a couple things to, to share with you. First and foremost, um, I have a letter, just a partnership that we're doing with, um, Taft Elementary School District, which is a letter to the State Superintendent Tony Sanders about the school construction grant program. So, we bit of history. This is a grant program that in two thousand and three, um, was ended. Um, and what it did was if there were, um, there was a, a, a school construction development grant board that would assess projects, if your project was making it up the list when you got there, um, the state would, would fulfill a third of the funding, right? So, whatever your project was, a third of the funding would come from the state. It was designed to make communities not carry the total burden of, um, school construction, additions, renovations, um, nu- nu- new buildings. That, that ended in, 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 in two thousand and three. Um, we and a number of other school districts especially are asking for the governor to renew that program. Why Taft and Lockport were at the top of the list when it was ended. We'd like to be back at the top of the list. There seems in Springfield a desire to bring the program back, but legislators are debating, do you go back to the list in two thousand and three and two thousand and four and just restart that list? Or do you do a full statewide after twenty years, re-scan of projects and create a new list? You can probably guess what we prefer. We'd like to see a restart of, uh, the new list. But as you can imagine, there are probably legislators out there that want to make their constituents happy. And in twenty years, they have new construction projects. So, so stay tuned. I hope Dr. Sanders, you know, want to give him time to, to respond to the letter. Three things that came up today in High School District, uh, yeah, Ms. Johnson.
Come and find a work and our way to the top.
Oh, we were at the top.
Oh, okay.
We were definitely at the top. And Taft was at the top as well.
Okay.
And, uh, it's a little bit more bitter for us to, to get to the top. It feels like you were waiting in line to ride the roller coaster.
Didn't get bumped up.
And it broke down right when you, you know, were at the front of the line. Um, so, you know, I, I think it's a very serious program because the state fulfills its state responsibility for educating students to help communities. For the past twenty years, any kind of school renovation, construction, it's been entirely on the taxpayers in the community. Um, and it was designed to provide just enough support to get these kind of projects, uh, done. So, uh, we're participating in that and trying to make a lobbying effort. Um, three things that are, are, um, coming up. One, uh, that we really dove into today, which is Senate Bill twenty-seven, twenty-one, which is called the Teacher Plan Time Bill. This is primarily coming from the elementary level in the state, but it's having, if, if in its form right now, would have great impacts on, on high schools. Um, having an elementary school life, um, planning time, if you're an elementary teacher, is often, you might have three periods in a week, when your students are at PE, when your students are at art. That would be when your planning time is, or at music. That's usually maybe three times or two times in the whole week. The intent of this is to get all teachers in Illinois to have planning time every day. Most high schools already have that embedded in their collective bargaining agreement. We have that embedded in our collective, uh, bargaining agreement. But the bill goes a little bit further. Um, occasionally, we have to use during plan time, and we have a mechanism in our contract to do this, to ask a teacher to substitute for another teacher, to ask a teacher to attend, um, an IEP meeting for, for a student. Uh, we try to balance that off. We try to not make that undue. Uh, internal subbing, we, we compensate for that. Um, but if it's a blanket, uh, it would have a dramatic impact on us because we already offered that plan time, but it would also, this bill, as it's currently presented, would block any teacher from, from subbing for another teacher during their plan time, would block going to an IEP meeting, going to a, a parent meeting that came up. And it makes it very, very difficult, uh, to, to schedule. So, we're keeping an eye on that, understanding the intent at the elementary level, helping legislators understand the high school level. We already have a lot of contractual, um, language for that. Accelerate Placement Bill, uh, the legislature's looking at it again. It's not exactly clear in committee why they're revisiting it, but that is the, uh, Illinois Accelerate Placement Act, which deems that if you earn certain test scores on state assessments, you automatically advance to the next highest level of coursework at the school that is, that is offered. We have a plan in place with our feeder districts to do that, to come into compliance with that. So, not sure, today we were trying to speculate why that's coming up in committee. We, we don't know. And then finally, something called Stand for Children Bill, fairly consequential for us. This is a brokering by, um, the organization that represents all of the junior colleges and community colleges in Illinois and ISBE, who are in, let's just say, a conversation about dual credit. And they're primarily in a conversation about what qualifies a teacher to teach dual credit. Um, ICCA, that represents all the, um, community colleges and junior colleges, would like each community college to be able to set the standard for what qualifies a teacher to dual, to do a credit. ISBE, advocating on many of us, would like to have an endorsement, a statewide endorsement, that qualifies you to teach dual credit. Um, ultimately, this gets into the Dual Credit Quality Act, so there is a lot of wrestling going on over this and trying to reconcile it so that we just have some clarity. Uh, this really matters in hiring, as, as, as Mrs. Kishline mentioned. We try to hire teachers, uh, who can teach dual credit because it's so valuable to our students. Um, but if we don't have clear guidelines on what qualifies a person to do it, it makes it very difficult for us. So, stay tuned. That's what we're watching these days.
Thank you. Do you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, very quickly, follow up on co-, um, public comment. We had Tammy Hayes, Jim Shake, Jay Rhodey and Anne Gardner all, all spoke. Um, Ms. Hayes, Mr. Shake, and Mr. Rhodey all, all spoke, spoke about the levy, you know, sort of just in a total general sense. Um, you know, just invite those individuals. It's, it's complex stuff. We're probably not going to get a robust conversation about taxation done, you know, in email or in, um, a public comment, right? And certainly respect the, the point of view of anybody who would say, hey, I'm offering public comment, that's what I'm offering. I'm not, I'm not interested in a, a deeper conversation. But I think there's just so much to gain by doing that Facebook. Really have to, Tammy Hayes in the audience, really have to give her a shout out. She's been, you know, last Wednesday gave up a lot of her time to be engaged and be at a tour of Central. I really appreciate that. Um, you know, that's being really shoulders in, uh, to think, I think it's just so helpful. It just deepens our conversation. And then Mrs. Anne Gardner just wanted to register, and I confirmed with her and followed up with her, wanted to confirm her support for, uh, a full renovation, not just a partial renovation of, of Central. She thinks a marquee building like that, it's best if you're going to renovate to, to do it all the way. And she just wanted the board to hear that and wanted you to know that.
Thank you. All right, moving on to public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comment section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy two colon two-three-oh and Policy eight colon three-oh available upon signing. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in issues brought to the board. And we have none. Communications.
We have one communication from the French family, um, and it states that there are not enough words to express how thankful we are for your sympathy and kindness in our time of sorrow. The support and comfort you provided will always be remembered by our family. Monica, Josh, Zach, Brian, Pam, Mike and Jason Kirk.
Thank you. All right, we have there your freedom of information requests. All right, moving on to the approval of, um, items. Need a motion to approve the finance facility committee meeting minutes of December eleventh.
And for a point of clarification, only members who attended.
Uh, also for a point of, of clarification, um, December eleventh, I believe all board members are present for that, if I'm, I miss remembering that. Okay, and I'm wrong about that. That's, I'm getting my dates missed on that. So, it'd be only Anne and Zion can, can vote to approve. And that would be a quorum of that committee because there's three. So, only, only the two of you can, can vote.
Okay.
Everyone else would have to abstain.
Okay. Zion, do you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, now seconded. All right, roll call.
Shaw?
Abstain.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson?
Absent.
Shimon Rogers?
Abstain.
Travis?
Thank you.
Lopez Camila?
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from the December eighteen, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting?
Some of.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Dr. Shimon Rogers. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
I have thank you for this.
Uh, I believe December eighteenth, you were absent.
Yeah, thanks.
Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Camila?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from January eleventh, twenty twenty-four special board meeting?
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Dr. Shimon Rogers. Are there any questions? All right, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Lopez Camila?
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from the January eleventh, twenty twenty-four special board meeting?
So moved.
And I can second that. All right, roll call.
Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Camila?
Yes. All right, moving on to treasures report. Stephanie Freud.
Board of Education? Okay, treasures reports. Um, this month, you, there's a, there's a couple of things, um, that I'd like to point out. Um, and Dr. McBride, will you go to the financial reports for me, please? Um, I just want to point out something on here, um, as we're starting to spend some things towards, um, can you scroll to the statement of position? It's maybe fourth page or so. As we're starting to spend money on Central with rent, things like that, um, you'll notice at the bottom, I, I monitor, um, a little bit further down, please. Um, you monitor the days cash on hand, okay? Um, you'll notice that, um, I just want to point out the operations and maintenance is low, right? Um, we are at the point where, um, we won't be getting tax dollars again until May. So, we've, we've kind of got a, a low point here. Um, I'm most likely, when we start, when I propose in April, what the amended budget would look like. Uh, there's some revenue sources that we can choose where we put them. Um, and so there might be a few of those that I would move to operations and maintenance to try and like switch some of those funds back to operations and maintenance. Things like our guarantee for our food service contract, um, I believe that it is budgeted this year in the, um, Fund Ten. We can move it back to operations and maintenance, which it has been budgeted there before. Um, and then things like, um, corporate personal property replacement tax could be split between funds if we need to. So, there's some things like that that might make sense to move some of the funds there to help us offset some of those costs and even out our days cash on hand by fund. So, I just wanted to point that out a little bit, that I'm monitoring that, I'm keeping an eye on how, how low that's dropping. Um, as well as, um, you know, some of the other things that we're going to have to amend in the revenues and the expenditures. So, that'll be coming in the next future months. Um, the other piece, um, can you go back to the, the, the report so we can look at the enrollment projection? The other thing I added to this, um, report this month, the treasures report this month, is an updated enrollment projection. So, historically, we've presented, I've presented that in November, but for some reason, um, access through the state, um, student information system of our feeder district, uh, data, I wasn't able to gather that until now. I, I didn't have access to it like I used to, so I had to collect it a little differently. So, it took me a little longer to get this done. But I did update it so that the board can see it. It's something that, it's kind of part of the budget process for me, right? Um, we look at enrollment, we look, start to look at staffing, all that stuff's coming up. Um, as you'll see, you can see where our current enrollment is, the projection, and I think last year it was the same. It does look like we will be declining over future years. We're not getting more students, we're getting different students, right? Um, I believe Dr. McBride has brought up before our, um, demographic report. My understanding, I think Dr. McBride and I chatted a little bit this morning, that, that this projection mirrors what we, we heard from that demographic report. Did you have anything else?
Right, it's, it's probably really, I think, important for the public to pause here, and then also just for the board to pause here. So, this report in, in reporting is called cohort regression or cohort addition. It's just simply looking at, if we look at our seven feeders and we look at the age of students, who's enrolled, what's moving up, if you assume that they each move up one for one, uh, that cohort addition or regression model is a, is a predictor. In twenty twenty-two, at the beginning of your referendum, you know, consideration of options with facilities, you had Jerome McKibben complete a demographic projection, but his, he doesn't use cohort regression. He does a study of housing patterns. Basically, what housing stock is available in our sixty-five square mile? And what does that suggest? What's the age of people who have held on to housing? How will age ultimately lead to a turnover and what's being turned over? How big are those homes? Who would buy those homes? What type of homes? Are they rental? Are they purchased? What does that suggest in terms of housing and sales, um, you know, in order to create a projection? And his work, completely different methodology. This work, cohort regression, almost pair, pair each other equally. One reason why I think that's so important for the public, uh, to consider is you considered it two years ago. And, you know, a little bit of my superintendent report, um, if you follow some of the conversation about the ballot item that you put on of renovation, you will hear some of the voices who, as in twenty-six, twenty, um, oh-six to twenty-eleven, are promoting new construction. Um, a more expensive option, uh, according to DLA Architects, uh, anywhere between a hundred and forty-five million from a freshman center behind East Campus all the way to, uh, in Homer Glen, all the way up to a hundred and eighty, two-hundred million dollars for a brand new building. There just isn't anything population-wise right now suggesting that you're going to have a population that might justify such a large expense as a brand-new building or a full nine through twelve high school. And I just think the public should keep that in mind, tho- those trends. I've seen some Facebook postings that have said, uh, Lockport East is overcrowded. Capacity-wise, it, it's not. Like, every high school I've worked in for thirty-plus years, if you go into the hallway at Old Park River Forest, Glenbard East, Niqua Valley, a passing period, these large public high schools with more than three thousand students, they're crowded. That's a, that's a fact, but they're not crowded for more than four to five minutes during passing period in terms of classroom utilization, gyms, things like that. We can talk about space. But I think this is awfully important, um, to, to really, really consider when you're making a decision. You did consider this. Uh, two years ago, you felt that, uh, focusing on Central in a freshman center, that you were seeing downline that there wasn't anything suggesting you were going to have a population explosion that would justify new construction. So, I just think it's something for the public to keep its eye on, you to keep your eye on, you know, in terms of, um, where we're at with population expectation. Yeah.
What about the influx of, of, uh, trans- trans- transitional students?
Right. I mean, that's accounted for really more in this, um, study than it is in this cohort regression. So, that was a trend that Jerome McKibben, because you might remember, he told you that in thirty-five years of doing demographic projections, he's only seen five districts, school districts, that have the same diversity in thirty-five years of doing demographic projections, he's only seen five districts, school districts, that have the same diversity as the whole nation. And he said our district was one of them, right? So he built into that, you know, when he used that phrase with you, that you're not going to see more students, you're going to see different students. He built that into his model, and and it's happening. You know, we're going to have a proposal tonight to increase our multiple language learners, staffing, you heard from students, right? So that's, that that's built in. So the presumption he made is not more bodies, but bodies with different needs.
But aren't they saying that there's more bodies?
No. So not more people, people with different needs, if that makes sense.
So different things I've been hearing, so that there's more people.
No, I would say we are declining.
Yeah, we're declining. We're either going to go even or we're going to decline according to
Right.
multiple sources from.
I understand that, but what's actually happening? People have been saying that it's rising, you know?
Yeah, that's not the case. So I don't know where anyone would get that from. It's really easy to go to like our school report card.
Yeah.
And you could actually look. So far, Jerome McKibben, two years into his projection, he's been right on the money.
So I mean.
Because I know, not necessarily Lockport, but in the Joliet area, there was a big town hall meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And they were saying there were over a hundred and twenty thousand influx of people
Hmm.
that come over the board. So I don't know where they are, but they said it here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that if they're in our general area.
Okay.
Right, you know, but I think what the students shared really illustrates the the case. Where we have new students, our students, like what Lola Rodriguez shared with in her PD class, there are four new students who arrived, right? Eventually, other students graduate, but those students have a real language need. They're a different kind of need that we're seeing than just four students who arrived and transferred maybe from Downers Grove or something like that. So, you know, Jerome McKibben projected not more students, students with different needs. And that really motivated you to think even more so, a freshman center is important to bring kids together to get them ready for high school and their place. So it was just a sort of backdrop to your thing.
I'm very curious as to why our school in particular is very reflective of the nation as a whole. If that's going to continue to trend as, you know, as the nation changes.
Well, you have sixty-five square miles. That's a really big, that that's as big as some downstate districts that serve, you know, large rural areas. This is very large. And so within that, you know, you already currently have such a diversity in in housing, right? You know, we could go to parts in our district where housing is is affordable to stressed. All the way, we could go to other parts of our district where housing is is only affordable to certain people, right? So you really, really see that, you know, and that that's what draws a diverse amount of people to to the district.
Any other questions?
So the, the, sorry, no, go ahead. The only couple other things I wanted to point out is we, I, we'd originally planned, my office had originally planned to have the bus bid to the board this month, but it was, it was just a few days before the board packet was finalized. So the transportation director and mechanics are, and safety officer are still analyzing the couple of bids that we came, that we got. And they will be for, that will be bringing up suggestion or a recommendation to the board next month for that. Then the last thing I wanted to point out was I, you may or may not have noticed in the payables, there was not a payment to Lincoln Way North, North to Lincoln Way District two ten, for the next month's, for February's rent. That is because after speaking with the business manager over there, Mike Dubak, we are waiting for some utility bills to collect in so we can analyze the last few months so that we can figure out what that rent should be. So he didn't want to give me a number without having backup, which I completely support. So there'll probably be, most likely be two months' rent payment on the next month's board. So you'll see that fluctuation, right? Are there any other questions about the financial reports?
And and I just want to throw one last thing up, you know, we always put this in here. This is your most current five-year financial projection. And you can see this is built in with a couple of different things. Lincoln Way North, as we're thinking about that as a temporary, you know, not a forever expense. The abatement that you voted for last month on two levels, right, levels that out. And then also, you know, any, the the repairs that you'll hear a little bit more about tonight to Central and where that's at. But then also, you know, that starts moving with students as well, our expectation of what we need to fund, given the size. If you lay those together, the student projection, and, you know, your your projected fund balances, they follow each other, right? You begin to see a decline, you begin to see that decline as well, because the expenses, you know, are also declining too.
I have a question about the bid for the buses. Would that be replacing the six buses that we already have or be adding six buses?
It's replacing. So we have a replacement schedule where every year we replace six buses. With the exception of one year on that cycle, we replace eight. And so that keeps our bus fleet really current. I think our buses are only about ten years old because of that. We just keep replacing the oldest or in most need buses. In most cases, it's the oldest. Sometimes it's the oldest and second oldest. What happens every year is our mechanics look at all of the buses and say, which ones do we need to replace? Which ones are having the most trouble, right? And usually, that's the oldest six or so. And then we turn those in, we trade those in for whatever they're willing to give us trade-in value for. And usually, the the person we buy our buses from, the company we buy our buses from, they resell them because our buses are in pretty good shape. Some people, some districts keep their buses for a lot longer than we do. But we've got this nice cycle going that's reasonably affordable as far as we spread out the purchases, you know? But yes, they will replace six of them and then we'll get six new buses.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve the December twenty twenty-three treasurer's report?
Motion.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shimon Rogers and seconded by Dr. Shaw. All right, roll call.
Travis.
Yeah.
Shimon Rogers.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Navarro.
Yes.
Lopez Camila.
Yes.
All right, superintendent update.
All right, a couple, a couple of updates. I'm going to let Dr. Green deal and Mrs. Kishline and I do. It was a banner weekend for the porters. I mean, it felt like what didn't we win? So I'll let you, Dr. Green, share all all that really good news. I also share with the board, kind of a big, our director of public relations, last Thursday, had a brand-new daughter, five pounds, fifteen ounces. So she is presently on maternity leave, so you will not see Mrs. Castillo around here for quite some time. So that's, that's outstanding. Couple of other celebrations, we recently had birthdays. Ms. Johnson just recently had a birthday, so we had a little bit of a LTHS swag from the administration from her. Very glad that she was born. Ms. Del Ponte, her birthday occurred over break, so we didn't have a chance to totally celebrate her. We're very glad you were born.
Thanks, ma'am.
Right? And every eighteen-year-old, I ask, did you register to vote?
I did, yes, but
Please do.
coming up with a presentation to show me how much.
Yes, outstanding, outstanding. It's very, very important.
Very good. Please vote.
Yeah, so a lot, a lot of celebrations, a lot of really, really good things going on that some of my colleagues will will share. I do want to hot off the presses, I have something to share with the board. Today, we met with DLA and we walked through, and this answers a question that that many folks have have asked. But but it's also something that we, I think, have to be really conscious of. And I think it's a completely legitimate question. When we were touring at Central last Wednesday, when I presented at Crest Hill, people said, wow, that ceiling collapse occurred on November first. What is taking so long? Well, simply replacing, removing, and then putting new ceilings up is just more complicated than than most people would think. First and foremost, we got a, we had an initial report from our forensic architects, we received a preliminary, a finer report, and then we'll receive a final, final report. For example, they've even done a little refinement of the orange rooms. They have red, you know those, three, but then they did a small refinement of purple rooms and then light blue rooms. What's the difference? The purple rooms are sort of the orange rooms that they really suggest that the board and hallways remove those ceiling systems. But the blue rooms, they recommend that we remove the ceiling tiles and we do something called sounding. We just do a double, double check since you have the opportunity to do that. To do specifications, architectural specifications, bid specifications for a job like that, it takes DLA time. And then then we have a timeline, you know, for when that can take place. So literally today, and I apologize to the public for not being able to upload this and all properly, but this meeting occurred today. So to give you a sense, January thirtieth is when bids will go out for the removal portion of ceiling replacement. Bless you, Mr. Navarro. February sixth, we'll meet with contractors. February fifteenth, bids will be due. February twenty-first, we're going to accelerate this a little bit because we, you are moving your board meeting to February twentieth, and we'll make those adjustments. We won't literally, we think, start construction on just ceiling removal till March to get all of that in place, hopefully finishing in April. And you might remember, there's a a stop there that once those ceilings are removed, we're going to have P's reimbursed. Associates come in, they're structural engineers. It's a great opportunity for them to look up into those removed ceilings. They might have suggestions. That'll influence the next round of bids that go into replacing the ceilings. So really, it's all about doing it right rather than doing it quickly. It is really the name of it. So I just wanted to update you where that's at. You know, right now, the substantial completion, we're looking at, you know, construction. And the construction mentioned there is demolition, removal, safe and careful removal, and having that finished in April. That's one reason why I've shared with the community that I don't see us coming back to Central this year. Because then, right after that, we'll start, you know, with the replacement of them. Any questions about the the ceilings?
Is this the cost, estimated cost?
That is the estimated cost of demolition. So the estimated cost of demolition for all of the 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 rooms that you've requested, you know, out of safety would be about seven hundred and fifty thousand to about eight hundred and fifty thousand. That's the demolition. And it's a really good question, Ms. Johnson. You might recall seeing that piece, you know, that is heavy, almost concrete, sharp, you know, mesh in there. That's got to very, very carefully, it's just not something you can knock down because of the the weight in the in involved and and how it's constructed. If you do the tour at Central, you can see high up, the actual ceiling is. Some of those rooms, it's almost fourteen feet high. So it's also going beyond the fall ceiling and getting all the way up to the, what I call the construction ceiling, is what's going to be removed.
So they got to go all the way up there
Mm-hmm.
for to fix the.
To remove, to remove the ceiling, that's the ceiling systems that are of concern. So also, for example, somebody has to remove all of those ceiling tiles, right? It's a somewhat tedious job. We have hundreds, thousands of ceiling tiles, right? So, you know, the analogy that I like to make is, you know, when people ask me, why is this taking so long? I I have always tried to meet someone who has had their kitchen or their bathroom remodeled in the timeline that they wanted. Very few people, just because there's all sorts of things that factor in, in this particular case, you've requested that we we do it, do it right. Speaking of Central, I would just use this as a preface also for the public, something I really want people to meditate on. This is a system that showed no obvious signs of stress, no water damage, no buckling, no small chunks falling. But yet, everything leads us to believe that heating, cooling in the summer and in the fall led to a stress that caused a certain ceiling system in nineteen twenty-eight vintage to to fail. It's one of many systems, we would have been doing all of this work if there was a successful referendum. We don't know where that's going. But I think it's just so important, sometimes I read, you know, feedback, questions will come to me, really good questions. People say, why don't we just fix the ceilings and bring the kids in and just finish it? And that's it, we just move forward. Well, there are other systems that DLA has identified, heating and cooling, electric, roof, those are three major ones that put that building and that freshman center in peril of, if any one of those failed, it would not be occupiable. What we're trying to do is head that off in an economical way to prevent that. This happened, you know, a little bit quicker. Just very quickly, you know, some things, great questions, community asking really good questions. One question I continue to get is options. It's very difficult. In in Illinois, we can't do multiple-choice referendums. You, as a board, have to put one option before people. But as you know, for the past two years, you've been studying options and included everything from putting new construction at a number of places, a number of types back on the ballot. You considered options with your demographic projection. You considered options when you put together a committee to look at Central. So you've really gone through a two-year cycle of looking at all the different ways that you can, you can handle a freshman center in a vintage, a vintage building. Folks frequently say to me that that clearly renovation is more expensive than new construction. There's just not an example of that that we that we can point to. We can give you lots of examples where new additions have been put on buildings, brand-new buildings have been built that are very expensive. Our colleagues over at Mill Kelvin Grove, they opened up bids based on a referendum they had and then some work that they were going to do. They were surprised at the high cost. They're going to hit a pause on their project, go back to their architectural planning because that is new construction, really, that they were adding, and they've been surprised by the cost of new construction. So frequently, people will ask me that question of, you know, and there are suggestions that new construction would be cheaper. One suggestion, I was talking with a gentleman, he just said, well, couldn't we just build a building out there that would only have classrooms? That's it, classrooms and bathrooms. We already, we can't take freshmen in here because we don't have the gym, the cafeteria capacity to host a thousand other people, right? That's not even even getting into site feasibility at our site in Homer Glen right now, and our site, you know, behind the building here. Both have site feasibility issues. One, Homer Glen water and sewer, and behind here, just water issues with a natural creek running through the back and protecting the neighborhood back here from any kind of water runoff. So a lot to, you know, really to to work through. I mean, I think one other final important thing, you know, there were a few people, you went over this, I'm sorry, it's very small. But this was a conceptual programming from from DLA, and I think it's very important for the public to remind, remember that as a strategy, we did a conceptual plan, rather than ordering DLA to create a down-to-the-studs-to-every-classroom architectural plan for you for the freshman center. Because then you would have expensive architectural plans that, depending on the will of the voters, you may or may not use. I did see a few people post this online with just sort of really this section. But if you look at the entire section, it really explains how in every area, square footage is literally going to be increased. Because other than the mechanicals, one of the cases that you're making as a board is the importance of renovating and improving those classrooms and bathroom spaces, which really haven't been done, you know, for over forty to seventy years. Yeah, Ms. Johnson?
So the B is that we got going out is just to do the ceiling tile? Because at one point, we talked about, since we got to do something anyway, we might do some, I guess, minor renovation in that area?
Right, so so three phases. You're looking at the memo that I sent you, the meeting we had today was phase one. All of the ceilings that you've said, you know, let's just call it red and orange ceilings, it's just removing those ceilings. That's all you're looking at right now. So phase one would be just removing those ceilings.
Removing them.
Taking them down.
Okay.
Phase two, once they're down, is having structural engineers come in and and look up in there. It's a rare opportunity to pull, you know, nobody's looked up in there since nineteen twenty-eight, nineteen oh nine. It's an opportunity to really take a look and do a visual inspection. But they're certainly probably going to have some recommendations. Put together, putting the ceilings back up, recommendations from the structural engineers, phase three, putting those new ceilings back up.
Are we just talking about ceiling?
Right, yeah, we're only talking phase one. Finally, calendar for next year. I'm going to kind of be a little bit streamlined. I'm going to show you option four. I've talked to my feeder superintendent colleagues, I've talked to our staff. It's interesting to me that some of the students have gotten wind, I'm not sure, of this debate among our staff that Mrs. Kishline and I did not expect. that Mrs. Kishline and I did not expect of, just more and more people would like August. So we do have some staff members who have said, we'd like to go as far into August as possible. The only way that Dr. McBride can bend the space-time continuum is if the semester ends after break. Now, you could do your finals before break and have the semester end after break. But the, the staff is fairly divided over, does the semester hard stop at winter break? Or would you have some sort of strategy where students receive their final exams back, they go over them? Teachers might do some wrap-up projects, how, how do you do it? So what I presented was a, um, an option four is, is a compromise. Where, um, rather than starting perhaps on, on August eighth and ninth, which would be a little bit early, we start on August fourteenth, fifteenth. Staff is also divided, some staff members like the idea of students just coming in on Friday? And then a full week the next week? Some think students won't come in on Friday, right? Uh, so we're trying to work that out. And I, and if you have any questions on this draft, we'll have a final for you next month. You've got Labor Day, really September is a, a very full month. We just put home coming on there because it can really do a disruption. Typically, on the tenth, we would have parent-teacher conferences, I'll show you where we put that. But traditionally, we've had a four-day weekend around Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. Now, we don't have to keep that day, we could, we could play with it a little bit. That is not a required, on the eleventh, it's not a required state holiday. It's just, we've left it there right now. Uh, but we are considering what to do with it. Where we put parent-teacher conferences is on November fourth, because we are required to be closed on Election Day. Um, we can't do e-learning on that day, we can't do any other activities. It would count as a school day because we would do five hours of parent-teacher conferences during the day. Five hours of parent-teacher conferences during the day, you could do that a maximum twice. But we're just thinking, uh, in the past, when we did this two years ago, um, on the Monday before the Tuesday election, we had very poor attendance. You know, as you can imagine, when people know that, you know, um, the fifth, they're not going to have a, you know, a, a day of school. So we're proposing just putting parent-teacher conferences. A little bit late in the semester, but it's just a way to, to solve that. On Veterans Day, we've opted to do programming during the day. We just think it's important to have students with us so they be, are made aware of the sacrifices of our veterans. We've kept, uh, the day before Thanksgiving, that has been something welcomed by our staff, welcomed by families. Just an opportunity of the day before Thanksgiving is no school attendance. And then being in step with our, um, feeder districts and ending, um, at least winter break. Where, is that the end of the semester, is that the end of finals?
Where does that dilemma come in, is that here?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what, Tori?
Where does that dilemma come in, the finals and the winter break, is that this?
Well, it would be right there, right?
And what's the aim right now, to have finals beforehand?
Well, right now, we have the semester, having finals before and having the semester end on this day.
Okay, so the finals?
The one thing it does if I push back in August a little bit?
Yeah.
The semesters are unbalanced.
Got it.
First semester is eighty-four days, second semester is ninety-two.
Okay.
So that's kind of one consequence.
So right now, we have finals like eighteen, nineteen, twenty?
Right.
Oh, good.
That's what we'd be thinking.
Yes.
Now, you could still keep your final schedule eighteen, nineteen, twenty. And then, when you get back into January, January sixth, you could have four days of, there have been schools that are going to this in districts I've been in, where those four days wrap up the semester.
Yeah, like a review.
It's like a post-finals?
Right, post-finals, here's your final back. You know, some teachers do corrections, I don't, that's up to them. Some teachers want to do a four-day end-of-the-year project, right?
Yeah.
I think the name of the game there, to be respectful, I think we, what we heard from student government, is students don't want to have some kind of homework or a novel or a presentation?
Right.
Hanging over them for winter break. So you'd have to, if you did that, you'd have to have some safeguards. If you got out on the tenth, if that's the end of the semester, the semesters would be a little bit more balanced, right? It'd be more like eighty-six and I'm guessing eighty-eight, be closer to being balanced. So this is a draft, we're not there yet.
Student perspective, I think it's just more important to have finals before break.
So you're putting the card down on finals before break?
Yeah.
End the semester as you will, but take the test.
Yeah, I mean, from a student perspective, I think it's way easier than trying to remember everything after you go on vacation during winter break. I think it's just, it risks your final grades, just especially because since COVID, we've been moving back up to finals are actually weighted higher. And I, I don't think we should risk blowing a final.
Right, and I think that's a, sort of a universal, at least what I detected from our staff, from students, just nobody wants to leave on a winter break, two weeks?
Yeah.
Of downtime with something hanging over your head.
Cool.
Right, you know, understood, right? Then you get into February, uh, we have generally in February, the end of February, kept an institute day because DuPage County does a huge institute day and very, very rich for high school educators. It's, some of the top names in education in the country, Columbia, DuPage, we can register for that, although we're in Will. And then we, we've kept Kasimir Plasky Day, we've just, you know, kept that. Um, we're not required to take that day, that's another day that you could play with if you wanted to play with it. Spring break, we align to our seven feeder districts, we all have the same, same spring break. Um, April is a very interesting month. You know, we typically, uh, the Friday before Easter and the Monday after Easter, we have no, um, school. But we could, you know, play, um, you know, talk about Easter Monday. And April, um, tenth, um, I believe twenty twenty-five, uh, is, is, I have to double-check this, is Eid.
Twenty-fifth, you said?
Uh, tenth, and actually, and I'm confused, you know, April tenth, this year is Eid. But Eid is a moving holiday in the Muslim holiday calendar. It's going to probably be a little bit later next year, so I have the twenty twenty-four date in my head. But we've also, oftentimes, you know, students of the Muslim faith who attend our school have said, could we have Eid as a holiday? Um, District two thirty is taking that off. You know, we, we, you know, the board would have to consider that, we'll look into that the next month where the board, you know, feels about that. And then you get into May, one of the interesting things this year is that Memorial Day is very early. So ending before Memorial Day, uh, very difficult. Uh, one recommendation that Mrs. Kishline and I were discussing is, we probably could create a calendar where the twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth, and the twenty-ninth are our last three days, three days of final exams, and we're done. So we're not ending on the thirtieth. It's a little bit challenging for teachers to have the twenty-seventh is a full day of school, and then you have three days. So those are the things we're working on.
Yeah, twenty twenty-five, Easter's April twentieth.
Yeah, it moves back, right? Difficulty with, with, with putting Eid into your, your calendar is, it's a constantly moving, like the Christian Easter holiday, it follows a lunar calendar. Same with Passover, right? All three of those Abrahamic religions do that.
Can I ask some, can I make a request? On all calendars, since we have like Christmas marked anyway, can we just have it so we're not trying to guess? I don't want to like go on my phone and like look up what Eid is.
Oh, yeah, sure, we can put it on there.
I don't, I really don't keep track of when.
Yeah, we can put it there, like Yom Kippur, Rosh Hashanah, Passover, right, the major religions.
Holidays of other religions that are?
Easy to do? A, any questions, opinions, Miss Sose?
I have a question about like religious holidays. Is, is there something for a religious exemption for students if we don't have that?
It's one of the five reasons you can be excused from compulsory attendance. So if you are celebrating, you know, a religious holiday, you're a Jain, Hindu, Muslim, Christian, um, you're, you know, Jewish, uh, you're not going to attend school on Yom Kippur, you can be excused from school. What that generally means is you're allowed the opportunity to make up all of your assignments, tests, things like that, right? So, at, all students enjoy that religious exemption. It's not generally something that we question. You know, if someone says, I'm not attending school because of Yom Kippur, because of Eid. That's not something that we typically, we don't, we're not asking anybody to show their Christian, you know, their certificate of membership in a church mosque or something, right? You know?
Thing is, there are some families, like there are Jewish-Christian families. So while they can have like the traditions of being like Christian, they can also like take off for Yom Kippur because their other half is there.
Right, we, we just accept what people tell us as their, their, their faith choice.
It is possible to have that two-religion household.
Yeah, for sure. Any, any preferences, any board, student board member, what you'd like to see, anything you'd like us to change?
I just have a clarificate, like clarification question. So it's, we start late and then we have a week after break that is still in the first semester, but we're not doing anything?
Well, what, what some, what some districts have done, what some high school districts have, have, have done, just kind of going to the back. And this is what some stu, what some staff are suggesting. Is if you look at the week of the nineteenth through the twenty-third, uh, more districts are starting that week, okay? So if you push back into this week to create more of August, right? When you get to, to the eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, you give your end-of-year assessments. But when you come back, a couple of things are happening on the seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth, for example. And these are just examples. Some teachers want to give, that, you know, go back over final exams because you don't usually get feedback on your final exams. Some teachers like to do task corrections. Some teachers have said that they would like that week to do presentations or that week to do a final project, right? A cap, kind of capstone project, right? School counselors in, in that week are making any changes that they need to do. So you have actually a very useful week, you're just using it in a little bit of a different way. Other teachers are saying, hey, we should end on the twentieth, and when you come back on the seventh, it's a brand-new day. That, that's actually the way this calendar displays. Because we have the seventh as the first day of the next semester, because that's what we've been doing for quite some time. So it all depends on when you want to start in August. So what I did is I kind of compromised. I put it as far back as I could in August while still ending the semester on December twentieth. That might not be what this board prefers or our staff prefers. We did a survey about this, it was very divided.
But that has the students taking the final before they go?
Almost everyone agrees that you should take your exams before winter break. Nobody wants to go into winter break with something hanging over their head, right? Districts that have done this, where they go one week into January, have also said, you know, the idea isn't for students to read a new novel over break, write a new paper over break, it's giving everybody a break, right?
I would have to agree with the teachers that say that we just start when we come back. I think it's just, for me personally, I like that, I like that new fresh start. And then also, I've been talking to some of my friends in like the eastern coast and they have something like that as well. It's just really hard to remember things from over break, even if you're just reviewing it. And even my teachers, they went over their final exams and we can have that in the schedule. So my AP Stats teacher, he went over our finals and our AP Lit teacher. So some teachers already do that, so I don't necessarily think we need to block out time for them to do that.
Right.
Is there any way to leave it up to the teacher? Like, here's your week, you can?
When to end the semester?
Like, can you do that or no?
And the reason why it's not, we're not able to do that is because we have to like print out schedules. We, you know, people have to go places. So we couldn't just simply leave it up to, you know, end your semester when you want.
Gotcha.
Right? Uh, because we have also, Ms. Del Ponte, we have so many semester classes.
Sure.
Oh, that's, that's a good point.
We have so many classes that end at the semester, they're done. You know, so if somebody asked to declare, when is the semester over?
Where do you fall on that debate? I'm just curious.
Where do I fall? You know, I, I guess I fall for whatever is supportive for our staff. This isn't the board calendar, like this isn't the calendar we do board meetings on. It's really a calendar for families and it's really a calendar for students and teachers. So whatever works, works best, right, under that. I do think August is, is how you start a semester, and I've noticed more and more that the more we push earlier and earlier into August, it's a more stressful start. Uh, people are ending their summer quicker and that ramps everything up. And that stress finds itself in September very quickly. So that, that's a concern to me, right? You know, how people, um, you know, can be very, very stressed out. Um, in this particular calendar, the way it shakes out, I'm just a little bit worried also about the balance, the imbalance between a ninety-two-day second semester and an eighty-four-day first semester, that's pretty imbalanced.
I did have a question about that, has there been conversation? I mean, working in education, obviously, I feel like second semester is typically the more interrupted semester.
It is more interrupted.
So since there are days lost in that aspect with, you know, AP testing as well as the SAT, a couple of days, things like that, would it necessarily be bad?
There, there are days, first semester and second semester, we could reclaim. You know, the non-attendance day before the Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day. We could reclaim, um, something like Kasimir Plasky Day or Easter Monday that would bring us a little bit closer and less interruptions. And that's definitely a conversation that we're having. Um, some people suggested when you look at February, February seventeenth, President's Day, that's a national holiday. We require a waiver to the state, we take that off. But then right away, we like the institute day at the end of February, DuPage. But if we keep Kasimir Plasky Day, it means for teachers and students, three, four-day weeks in a row. You know, can we clean that up? Students have spoken, you know, very clearly, you want, and I, I, Ms. Sose, what I'm hearing you say is you want the semester to end on the twentieth. Restart on the seventh.
Yeah.
Right?
I think it's just because we're used to it.
Right.
It gets them ready for college, too.
It is the way most collegiate institutions. All right, we'll be bringing, you know, I'll, I'll put this in your board update, I'm, I'm, you know, wide open. We're trying to serve, you know, as many people. So that, that is the end of my report.
Thank you.
Congratulations, your input helped decide if the schedule of everybody's next year.
Thanks so much.
All right, information retorts.
Pitchforks and torches.
You didn't even bring up the snow days in E-Learns.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, one other thing in my report, just to remind the public as well, we are changing to seat a new school board member to Tuesday, February twentieth. Uh, the school board meeting, uh, February school board meeting will be Tuesday, uh, February twentieth. So you can make your deadline to seat a board member by state statute.
Okay. Um, I'm just here to answer any additional questions that anybody may have about our proposals that were on, uh, the board meeting. And we also included some of that data that we talked about, um, in, uh, writing here about the counseling position and the EL teacher request. Did anybody have any additional questions for me? Okay.
I would just say, yeah, I would just say on the items that our, um, uh, student government students, uh, talked about, uh, I thought like they did a great job of, they got that kids are in their classes because that's the way that's going to expedite these students learning English quicker. Um, they're feeling a change in education philosophy because for a long time, just like students who had special needs, students who had language needs were kept in classrooms, isolated away from their peers. And we reported regularly in the curriculum committee meeting about how our students are doing awesome in the co-teaching and being out and becoming more active and acclimated in our school community. So I loved hearing them come to that conclusion, like, oh, being, maybe that was one of you that said that, being around peers and accessing it. And I was like, President Lopez Caniva bringing in the good instructional strategy was saying, did you ever think about partnering? Cause that would be a good instructional strategy. But, um, clearly, we just want to do all we can to help the students that Jerome McKibben's told them were going to come and we're just going to keep getting more diverse learners. And they're not, you know, having bilingual Spanish teachers wouldn't work in every single class because we have students who speak Ukrainian, Macedonian, those are the two hardest languages, those are very challenging.
I can't find any interpreters for Macedonian, it's real hard.
So, so to have interpretation can't be the total strategy that we use. So anyway, loved hearing what they had to say. Andrew comments back.
Also, MLK Day of Service?
Yeah, so, um, we put down, um, really exciting, you know, we're at fifty percent of our seniors have already completed all their graduation requirements. We're ahead of where we were last year, ahead of where we were the year before that. You know, we, we will, we have, um, another offering for sure where we do, the seniors will serve in the Fairmont community. And then also, um, Ms. Crosby, who is our College and Career Coordinator, is working and exploring another community service opportunity. It's about building beds. So, um, she's worked with an organization that that's what they do is build beds and give these to people who haven't had beds before. But we're trying to learn a little bit more on that.
I, I think, uh, I wanted to make sure that we pointed out that this data was pulled on January ninth before our, uh, Day of Service. So we anticipate- So we anticipate that there'll be even less students in the community service.
Didn't you want to say something about our students in the academy?
Oh, I did, for the first time ever, all of our students that are in the academy program have completed their community service before January, so.
That's awesome.
And that really was, um, uh, they partnered with the Seniors Will Grow, uh, in the Fairmont Community. They did a lot of the, um, the rain barrels that are in the community, they painted all those and made those so beautiful. And, um, so we just made sure that they had a real opportunity to do that and they enjoyed every minute of it. No complaining, none whatsoever.
Wow, that's incredible.
It is, we're very proud of them, yep.
Yes. Do we know why the hundred and forty have not done anything?
So I would just say, um, we actually.
They work or what's the story?
We have one of our deans and one of our guidance counselors are excellent at working with those students and trying to motivate those students from, to get them into the service. I feel like we have a lot that you don't even have to be on site somewhere. So for example, something we're doing to support our EL students, uh, with our interact club in, is create word walls. Word walls help all students, not just students who don't have English proficiency yet, but it helps students with academic language. And so, um, they, there's a applic-, uh, a form teachers can fill out, I would like word walls for my classroom. And, um, Ms. Kentyar will give it to students and the students can take it home and make the, the words for the word walls and bring it back to school. So I think we have a lot, um, but we'll continue to explore and ask that question. Ms. Johnson, like, is, what else can we do to help you meet the needs?
I said in a couple of meetings this week where there were students that I know, I've seen at community service and I said, why do you have zero hours? Oh, I haven't entered them yet, I'm like, come on, guys.
So, can I add something? So that is actually what, the point I was going to make with Dr. Huntington just made. The last couple of years, as we have really tried to increase our communication with students, I have found that of the one hundred and forty, though I can't give you, of course, an exact percentage, there's a good number who actually have hours completed, they just haven't entered them. So we have entered layers of support, like Dr. Christopher Ferro mentioned, of some representation from our dean's office, guidance office, me, we'll, we'll go.
No prom tickets without it.
We have, we'll have a raffle for twerk, we'll, once again, for the second year, students attending prom will have to have theirs completed and entered in order to get their ticket. But we also know not all students like to dance and we have our, we'll have our communication with them as well to make sure that they get them done.
Okay.
No questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
About, um, some of my concerns about the ELL students and especially teachers that don't speak another language. Sometimes there's a language barrier. So is there classes or like, um, institute days that the teachers can take that maybe they're not learning another language or they can learn how to communicate with those students?
So I would just say we're really fortunate and the teachers are really fortunate that they have this device in front of them all the time. And we know students have this device with them that does help them. Uh, we work on a lot of instructional strategies and in fact, just on our Institute Day, we had some training about any tool we have called elevation and how you can, um, uh, scale your, your learning targets to help meet the individual needs of students who are acquiring the language. So, um, I say, I keep saying, we just try to keep get, getting better. American education has not, we don't have a panacea to solve it, we just try to keep getting better to support the students in acquiring the language as quickly as they can.
And, and it's important, we, we do discuss, we, we have, uh, every other week, we have a EL task force meeting where we all get together and kind of talk through problems and, and see what we can do to strategize, um, in the best interest of the students. And sometimes, um, you know, over accommodating is also something that we've got to be aware of, right? So sometimes if we translate everything, it just removes that need to learn the language, right? So it's, it's a fine balance, you know? So our newcomer students, we might have some additional translation software, things like that that they can use. Um, as students are here in this country longer, we, we expect acquisition of the English language. If they're not acquiring the language in a time that makes sense, we might do evaluations, we might look at, see if there's something else that's preventing them from being successful in that acquisition, yes.
Um, well, for our next curriculum committee meeting, possibly, um, I'm just looking at math and science here when it comes to failures of our EL students, just having a discussion about that, um, and kind of what we're going to put in place. Is, I mean, is it a matter of, you know, proficiency and maybe they don't have proficiency in the native language regarding some of the terms and topics that are being brought up in these classes?
The vocabulary is definitely a hindrance in those, those groups.
But, but one of the things I put on there is the fact that in our English classes, those are the classes we were co-teaching and we don't have any co-taught math or science. So hopefully next year, maybe we can cluster kids in particular classes and provide co-teaching in math or science.
So we, we are already, like I said, a task force meets and so we, we did make some adjustments and changes for second semester. We did do some moving of students, we do have some, um, hair professional that, um, do have some additional language, um, supports. So, um, we, we are making those adjustments, fast and furious.
I, I am very curious about something, though. For those students who are like not doing well in math, are they doing not, like not well in the, um, formula part? Or are they doing not well in the, um, like sho-, you know, the, what are the two languages?
So the language, so you're. Computation versus like word problems, those kind of things, things that are causing.
Yeah, like the word problem, like, you know, when they say like, oh, if Billy has five apples.
Yeah.
I'm just very curious as to if it's that part of.
Are you, are you asking about the EL students in particular or all math students?
No, like, yeah, the EL students as to if they're doing well in one or the other.
So we'd have to look that up. We'd have to look that up, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm going to assume that the language is preventing them from, um, accessing some of the work, yeah.
But is it from the?
It could be historic, they might have not had schooling, I mean, there's so many variations. When kids come into our school, you know, they all come in with a different lived experience.
Exactly, because, you know, like here in America, if they're, if you're doing like a word problem where it's like about a train, you're not going to really have context about like how fast trains are.
Yes.
Or maybe they do because they're from Europe, but I don't know, just something to, like, look, maybe look into, maybe that.
Typically, the research on that is that there are varied experiences that people bring with mathematics. So that, that's definitely a factor, how rich that, that has been. Oftentimes, the computational skills of students are strong, actually have strong computational skills. It's the abstract skills and the key with the abstract skills is language in mathematics, right? So if you, let's just think mathematics, if you're being asked to do something with a set of your, you're factoring, very concrete, you're multiplying, very concrete, adding, subtracting. But now someone says something like evaluate, reduce, solve, determine. Those are very abstract words that are used in mathematics and not always present in lots of other countries in terms of how they describe an action in mathematics, like evaluating, right? So that is oftentimes from a research basis what might throw people off because, you know, you've got a language that has there, there, and there, stake and stake, right? Um, and so it's, it's, it's usually the, the language describes an abstract action that a student has to take. Graph, right?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. Dr. Green obviously has lots to say. Uh, Dr. Green this evening had a personal conflict, so, uh, a family conflict, so I excused her. Um, just to, to, to work with that and be present for that.
Good evening, everyone. Um, there's about four things that I wanted to spotlight this month in the principal's report. Uh, number one is the Institute Day that we had returning from winter break. It was a great example of professional learning amongst our colleagues. We had nine different stations that staff had the opportunity to choose from. We did have a couple of required learning opportunities on the McKenney Vento Act as well as, um, staff members talking about their work with their PLCs. We had administrators a part of the presentations, but we had as well with teachers, department chairs, AP coordinators, instructional coaches, members from our guidance staff, counselors, social workers. It was a great morning of learning, uh, returning from winter break. And I think it just really shows again the type of professional development environment that we really have cultivated here the last few years, is this has been a model that we've used for the past several Institute Days over the years. We were able to honor our maroon apple winners. Uh, we had a, a great student panel that gave our staff great feedback on things that really work for them. And then in the afternoon, we were able to give our staff the time they need to prepare, uh, for the first day of the second semester. So I just wanted to mention Institute Day was a great success and thank you to the board members who were able to attend. Um, as Dr. McBride mentioned a little bit earlier, um, we had a outstanding weekend in athletics. Our boys bowling team won a sectional championship and will be competing at the state finals this weekend in O'Fallon. And then we had conference championships in girls bowling, cheerleading and.
Wrestling.
Boys wrestling, it was a tournament championship, yes. Um, so we are anticipating more state appearances in the following weekends. And, um, representing activities, you saw live in person here, the great representatives that we have of our all-state band and choir students. So of course, we're very proud of them and look forward to more events and competitions upcoming. Um, uh, the third area that I wanted to highlight is actually something that Tori mentioned and, and Chelsea is highly involved in. And that is our voter registration opportunity that we are going to have for students next Tuesday, January thirtieth. Um, this was Chelsea's idea and as a former social studies teacher, I'm very proud to hear that Chelsea wanted to bring this opportunity to our students, um, where students will have the opportunity to register to vote next Tuesday. But beyond that, too, I also want to mention just again, another example of the great use that we have of our compass period. Because it's, it's, it's a great block of time that we continue to get awesome feedback on, students connecting with their teachers. But then resource opportunities, and this is a great example of that. We have our guidance office who meet with our students, our dean's office. But here's a great example, we'll have representatives from the Will County Clerk's Office coming in to able, and they will be presenting to students, and, and the compass portion is optional. But it just gives kids the chance to sit down and just get a little bit more information. So thank you to Chelsea for your work on that and really look forward to see what kind of voter turnout we get. Um, I know a lot of times I used to teach government, students often look at election results and they see, you know, these big numbers and sometimes a big differential between who wins and who loses. Um, but if you look a little bit closer, you know, particularly at the local level, um, the area of government that I think we are most directly impacted on a day-to-day basis, there are election results, as we've seen over the years, that are mere single vote difference. So when students often say, oh, my vote doesn't really matter, um, it, it actually really does matter. So we're really excited to have that opportunity next Tuesday. What are you going to ask someone?
Yeah, Willco students always got to chime in. I think Chelsea said it's during lunch that you register, but Willco students don't have lunch, so I was wondering if there's time for them?
Well, we will work on that. I know that the compass portion, um, is an opportunity for them to actually register as well. They're getting information, will they actually be able to register?
The registration starts third period, but they'll.
So it starts with the lunch. We'll work on those students to make sure that they have that opportunity. So thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Um, the fourth, yes?
I have to say, in local elections, if I'm remembering correctly, there was somebody who only lost by two votes. So that like really counts.
You see it with city council races, mayor races, school board races, so it, it's really important, it's really important.
It was like a local thing around here that they lost by two votes, so.
Well, one of the points I always try to make to my students was if one person has that attitude, that my vote doesn't matter and that spreads to ten and then to one hundred and to a thousand, you know, there, there are elections that are extremely close. So we want to spread that word and, and we're happy to have that opportunity here at East Campus. Lastly, I am a part of a principals collaborative group, um, that actually Dr. McBride started when he was the principal at Niqua Valley. My first year as principal, Dr. McBride got me into that group. It's largely DuPage schools, but there are some Will County representatives as well. We meet about eight.
You had some Cook County.
So that's right, we do have some Cook County as well, yes. So we meet about eight times a year and we rotate high schools, um, to be the host. And I hosted last Friday in this room. And I bring that up because, um, I very much like to brag about us. And what was also really cool to see is how much, from the, the principals that were here and then also on Zoom as well, how much they really loved our Eltown Grounds and our Porter Pride Store. Um, big thanks to Dr. Huntington for offering up Eltown Grounds and she actually came to, to talk to the principals about, um, the concept and the idea behind Eltown Grounds. They were amazed at the, just the variety of menu options that people have here. But then even like walking them through the cafeteria, they were like right, I wasn't planning on stopping at the Porter Pride Store, I don't know why, but they saw that, I think I probably just take it for granted, you know? They saw that and they were just attracted to that and there's, of course, we're talking about our entrepreneurship classes, sports marketing. So it, it's, it's always nice when we have guests coming here, whether it be for athletics, for activities, or an example like this principals collaborative, where I not only get to network with other principals to try to be the best I can be, but then to also really showcase, you know, the great school that we have here, so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Can I, can I add to Dr. Green's report, sort of the open out there? Uh, we'll be back Wednesday night, there's only one action item on your agenda, the agenda's been published. Uh, today, uh, recommending Dr. Green to replace Dr. Mr. Dari uh, as the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources next year. So that's, that's a big step, it creates, you know, a vacancy as well in the principal position. So obviously that has to be approved by you Wednesday night. Uh, but, you know, with Dr. Green here, an agenda already published, you know, just want to acknowledge that.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Lopez Caniva, want to jump into the overnight field trips?
Yes.
Just overnight field trips, uh, we have varsity baseball, they've, they've headed down to the Edwardsville area now, um, annually on, under Mr. Malinowski, uh, so that's just informing you of that, Dave. And then also, uh, Coach Dave Wilson, uh, this was sort of after the fact, we had an opportunity to go down to Pontiac and we did. I'm always apprised of this, but we also want to put in the agenda so people know when porters are, are, are traveling. I'll jump quickly to the maintenance, uh, report. Uh, you know, uh, some of this I already dealt with, uh, Mr. Thompson is obviously here to, to answer any, any questions that you might. Um, probably one of the things that I would really highlight that is, is interesting at Central, we continue any work that we're going to do. We have to examine for asbestos, primarily airborne loose asbestos, which was used in the late fifties, sixties, seventies as an insulation, very, very dangerous from a respiratory point of view. We have found none. Uh, we know that we have in some of the floors hard asbestos, which was used as an underlayment. And whenever we disturb that, we properly remove it. Um, it's dangerous, but it's not nearly as dangerous as the, uh, loose asbestos was caused of something, a cancer called mesothelioma. Um, so good news as we make, make, make our way, uh, through that. And you've got some of the work that we've done, you know, over break, uh, tables, chairs. If you do take the tour, Mrs. Lopez Caniva did, it, it, it's mournful at Central, it feels like it's been robbed. Um, we robbed it. You know, we've really just taken everything that we can use at Lincoln Way North out, out of the building. You also see, um, you know, just, you know, some things that we are also doing at, at, uh, Central. We've really transformed the port at Lincoln Way North, but at the same time, you might recall, um, about six months ago, you approved having new furniture in the port at Central. That furniture's being put together right now even as we speak. So every Wednesday, our staff is at Central and we're actually getting ahead on some things that are just things we need to get done. You've got all of the different, um, things going on. Uh, questions for me or Mr. Thompson? Did I miss anything, Mr. Thompson? All right.
Thank you. All right, moving on then to our consent agenda items, from number two to number ten. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'll move.
Second. All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Johnsons?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, action consideration items, do I have a motion to approve the licensed personnel for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year?
Seconded.
And it's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Mr. Navara. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the contract extension to food service agreement?
Someone, second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, second by Dr. Shimon Rogers. Aren't there any questions?
Aren't there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to increase petty cash in the transportation fund? Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shimon Rogers and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Travis?
Yeah.
Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the multi-year contract for software renewal? Motion approved, second. It's been motioned by Dr. Shimon Rogers and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
We have no policy updates, right, announcements, other than the backup, our February board meeting being February twentieth.
Yeah, just, you know, January twenty-fourth on Wednesday night, uh, you'll, you set aside that time to interview, uh, we had sixteen candidates, um, apply for a vacant position on the board, so you set aside time for candidates you'd like, uh, stay and fight. Six thirty PM, February fifth, curriculum, uh, committee meeting, February twelfth, board finance. And then February twentieth, that's a Tuesday, um, your regular February meeting.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Second, it's motioned by Dr. Shimon Rogers and second by Dr. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was a tired eye. All right, thanks, everybody.